To get through everything, then we will have a work session on November seventh to address any additional questions as they come up. All right, so I'll go ahead and jump in. At our September twenty, September nineteenth work session that we had, we identified all of the priorities and different projects that we were looking to accomplish in the twenty-five budget. And what I heard from you all was capital improvement planning, which always seems to be in there. Landscaping and beautification, staff supplies, tools and equipment, street repairs and improvements, that's a big one. We had the Meadowwood Park infrastructure expansion. We had the work session at the last meeting and we discussed quite a few items in there and then Main Street and Visitor Center and different areas in that economic development nexus. All right, so as far as capital improvement planning goes, we looked at the Meadowwood Sports Complex and we did program in the budget three million fifty thousand as a capital reserve set aside specifically to look at Meadowwood and what improvements we can make there. So we are going to have staff do a solicitation for a request for information, which is an RFI to better define the cost and bring recommendations to council. I would imagine that it'll probably be about February that we'll bring back those recommendations and actually look to possibly bring a supplemental and and move into the next step there. Okay, as far as staff supplies, tools and equipment go, we have four vehicles requested in across the entire city. We have one in facility and grounds. We have one in utilities and two in police. And we also had small additions that we've made in the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four budget, which have just been carried over to the two thousand twenty-five Public Works and Facility and Ground budgets to bolster funding for items like tool replacements, equipment and vehicle parts and maintenance. I probably should have started off by saying how I would approach this presentation. I'm going to go through all of the changes that are requested in the budget, anything that we've asked as an add and then any other big discussions that we've had over the past few months as to what would be in the budget. Then we will actually go into the department narrative pages and look department by department, what changed, what's different?
Aaron, if we've got any questions on these slides, would you prefer that we wait until you finish your presentation?
No, we can ask questions as we go through. If they're too complicated or I think it's going to take a long time, then I'll
You'll shut up?
Yeah, 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 that's not happening.
Well, it happens at home all the time. On the slide before this, on the capital reserve, can you explain the difference between our capital reserve and our regular reserve and our table reserve?
Oh, absolutely. So this is above our seventeen percent minimum reserve that we have and then our three percent table reserve. This is in addition to that. So this is money that has been set aside. It has no actual restriction on it. It's just set aside for that purpose at council's direction. Council could come back at the next meeting and say, hey, we want to spend that money on something different. And then we would bring back a supplemental for that specifically to program it in there. But thi- this is a completely separate reserve from our regular unrestricted fund balance and from our table reserve.
And how much is in the capital reserve?
The capital reserve is this three
Exactly this amount?
Exactly this amount, yep.
Okay, wow, wow, mention that. Okay, thanks.
All right, so for the next item that we have, we have competitive staff compensation. In the budget, we programmed in here a merit pool of a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in the general fund for employees who met expectations in two thousand twenty-four. It comes out to roughly about two point five percent of an increase. We do have the exact same increases programmed in for the other funds. I just didn't break out the amounts here in the sheet here. And then COLA increase, as we looked at the inflation index, we were looking at about one point nine percent year over year. So we put in a two percent COLA to offset any of those inflationary measures, and that would be effective in July of two thousand twenty-five, which is similar to what we've done the last three years.
I'll just share that. This is exactly what the board at PPACG has been discussing for next year as well, is a total of four point five. And it was, that's kind of where it seems like we're headed, but it was up to a five percent analysis for PPACG as well. So When you say PPACG, are you talking about all of the cities that they are? No, for staff, for their staff. At the PPACG.
And I will say in addition to this, in our interdepartmental fund, in our interdepartmental budget, which we have in there, it's the one nine nine that we have in the budget book here. We've for the last, I believe, four years, we've had fifty thousand dollars in there for salary increases that the market indicates. This year, we would be due for a comp study to look at salaries again, but I've decided that I think we should wait until the following year to do that. But I have asked for an additional fifty thousand in that line as well in addition to this, so that we can do targeted increases as they come up for things that are needed. Just wanted to add that and we'll get to that page in a little bit, but I wanted to, it's all included in this piece right here as well. All right, so as far as fund balance goes, the general funds unrestricted fund balance reserve is projected to end the year at thirty-two point two seven percent in two thousand twenty-four. So we do have quite a bit there and that that is mainly due to vacancy savings and just unspent capital projects we didn't do. We didn't end up doing that fiber project, which we had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for. So it's a combination of those that have led to this being much higher than the twenty percent. All right, and so we have taken all that into account as we look into the two thousand twenty-five budget. And so when we built everything out here, we do anticipate the general funds unrestricted fund balance reserve at the end of twenty-five to be nineteen point eight one percent. So right around that twenty percent mark. And that's two point five million dollars approximately. And of course, these are projections. These are based on the projections we make for revenues and expenditures. They're not always perfect. We hope they're as close as they can be, but this is where we think we're going to end after we built the budget out here. Any questions on these two? Good, all right. Okay, so as far as revenues go for two thousand twenty-four, our year-end projection, we did come in a little bit under budget from where we thought we were going to be. A lot of that was March came down came in much lower than we were expecting. So we do think our year-end number is going to be about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in total for all of our revenues, not just sales tax for the entire budget. So we're expecting to end the year at fourteen million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand for our total revenues. And then for two thousand twenty-five, our revenue budget, we're looking for the general fund revenue to be approximately fifteen million five hundred and forty-three thousand, which is a two point six percent increase over the two thousand twenty-four budget and a three percent increase in our sales tax. All right, for expenditures, we look at expenditures for the general fund in two thousand twenty-four. They're projected to finish eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars under budget. And that is a combination between a couple of capital projects that we did not complete and also vacancy savings. You can see there the personnel costs were down six hundred and twenty-five thousand from budget, which is nine percent. I will say that's a huge number, but it is a hundred thousand dollars less than it was the year before. So we had a little bit less vacancy vacancies in the city this year than we did the year before, which is a good thing, but we still had quite a bit there. And that's due to a large number of vacancies across the general fund. As you know, right now, we don't have a finance director or city engineer, so that's definitely making up a chunk of that that number. All right, so that's two thousand twenty-four. For two thousand twenty-five, our expenditures, we're looking at two thousand twenty-five increasing by four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which is a two point eight percent increase over the previous year, and we're expecting expenditures to be approximately sixteen million dollars. And you can see there twenty-three versus twenty-four versus twenty-five. The actuals always seem to be a lot lower than our budget. And that's mainly due to the the personnel savings. All right, so what other additions do we ask for in the budget here? So in the executive summary, we had cost of living adjustments in healthcare. So we did have the two percent COLA in July and then healthcare costs. I think I've shared this with you all, but we did have a twenty-three percent increase in our healthcare cost, which was unexpected and and very expensive. So the city is going to absorb eighty percent of that in the budget and twenty percent of that will be passed on to the employees. That's what we're, that's how we built it out. Anyway, we can discuss that if you'd like. Merit compensation, the hundred and ninety-one thousand will be included for merit adjustments based on employee performance evaluations. So it's not just automatic. They have to have at least a meets expectations on their performance review in order to get an increase. Then we have mandated cost increases. We did have a pretty large workers' comp and property casualty increase this year, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that line. And then we added in their economic development support, forty thousand for the visitor center and thirty thousand dollars for Main Street.
On that, I forced myself to watch the hour-long video from Dola's Main Street website on what the requirements, the minimum requirements for being recommissioned with a Main Street organization. And it said that for a population over five thousand, we did have to have a full-time manager or executive board director. How how can thirty thousand dollars cover that?
But this is just the, this is just the Main Street contribution that we make for them to be able to have operating expenses?
So how would, how, if we have a Main Street again or reinvigorate the old one, how will that occur without a director, a full-time director?
So right now, there's two pieces to this. Right now, we do have one vacancy in the finance department that we're planning to program to be a combination of like a grant writer slash economic development liaison. I don't, we're not going to call it a director, but we've called it something up to that effect. So we do have an allocation there for that.
Okay.
My understanding, when working with Dola, is that in order to be in the, I forget the term right now, but basically in the second tier of the Main Street program, we only need a part-time position.
Twenty, yeah, twenty hours.
And so that that's how we would accomplish that. And that that is not, that's already included in the budget from twenty-four and it's just, I just have it over to twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this thirty thousand is specifically for like their operating expenses and to do events and that kind of thing.
And then with the visitor center for some time now, we've talked about doing an RFP for the visitor center. Are we prepared to do that now or later?
Yes, yeah, we're prepared to do that now.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that it was definitely the direction of council before we move forward. So having it in the budget will definitely reassure that, yeah.
Aaron, do every, when when our insurance and workers' comp thing go, premiums go up, do you, do we reach out and compare? Get other bids or?
We will certainly be doing that this year.
Okay, because remember the lady I met at the CML that she was with kind of call?
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah, we want to ensure we're getting competitive rates. So absolutely. And we want to provide the best possible insurance we can to the employees. So we will be looking at that. We are very happy right now with our plans, so we've kept all of our plans the same. But in terms of the cost, it's it's getting expensive.
But you were asking about workers' comp insurance.
Oh.
She was asking about workers' comp.
Gotcha.
I just want to make sure.
Yep. We, part of the reason we had this increase, we did get the, we had a couple of large claims. One of those was the hockey rink and being able to redo that. So there there were a few things that made up this this hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase.
We actually had, we had two claims over this year. We had two claims over a hundred thousand dollars. One was the hockey rink and one was all the hail damage to all the roofs at City Hall, that City Hall throughout the city. I will tell you, if I, if I can for one second, Aaron, it's our property casualty that went up, which is the insurance for the buildings and all of that. Our employees have done an exceptional job with workers' compensation. Our working, workers' compensation has been staying steady for the past few years, and I'm really proud of them. They've done a great job. The things like hail damage and the wind event at the hockey rink, we can't help those.
And how many years before those fall off? Just?
Three.
Three years, okay.
So we have a very, workers' comp should go down next year, God willing.
Yes.
We have a very large claim that'll be coming off this year. So our rates next year for workers' comp should be less. But I don't think we're going out to bid for those.
No.
Okay, that's why I wanted to stand, I wanted to make sure.
Our coverage has been very good with with those. All right, so capital projects, we have two replacement vehicles for the PD, which is a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will be used to replace two of our patrol vehicles in the police department. We're looking to get trucks this time so that we can be prepared if we have another humongous snowstorm. So we were looking to do, I believe, F-one-fifties on these. So they're a little bit more than the interceptors would have been. We're looking for one replacement vehicle in Public Works, which is fifty-four thousand. That's going to be a Chevy fifteen hundred and that'll be used to replace one of our aging vehicles and facility and grounds. And then facility upgrades, we're looking to spend about sixty-five thousand dollars. Part of that is we're doing new badge swipes at the cultural center. So all of the exterior doors will now have bat badge readers instead of the the keys that we have that don't seem to work all the time. And then we'll also have thirty-five thousand dollars, which is facility upgrades at City Hall in the planning department. We're trying to make a little more space in there and redo pretty much the entire side over there.
Just one more question. So the police, two, two replacement vehicles for the police department for a total of one fifty? Is there any way we can take the Mercedes back from Chief and get him, get him a Ford or something?
The, the cost of the vehicles themselves isn't that much, but all the outfitting and everything else, it's, it's pretty expensive. I thought he was getting a Range Rover, but if he's only getting a Mercedes, then.
But you do sell them, the used vehicles, correct?
Oh, yes, always, yes. If we, if we don't repurpose them, it just depends on how it looks, because we may take the oldest vehicles we have and sell those and then move those into the loaner vehicles or other things that we have. But yes, we, we always look at that every time. And then in addition to those projects, we do have the fire suppression and HVAC that you've been hearing about for like twenty-seven years at the Cultural Center. And so we are, that is happening, that that is happening very soon. We're hoping, I think, that December, right, is when they're supposed to get started.
Or the air conditioning.
We believe December is when they're actually going to start on the work and then it will be done sometime in the beginning of two thousand twenty-five, hopefully not too late into the year. And so that that's a combination between the last remaining bit of ARPA funds that we have and then general fund makes up the rest of that. We are very excited about that, if you couldn't tell. Okay, so now that that was it for general fund. Those were all of the additions that we asked this year. For the grants fund two thousand twenty-five, as we just said, four hundred and eleven thousand, we have four hundred and eleven thousand left in ARPA funds remaining that's going to roll over. And so that will be used towards the fire suppression and HVAC equipment. That, that's how that project was able to be funded in the first place. And so we are ready to get that done there. All right, the DDA executive summary. So DDA is projected to have nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in tax increment financing, the TIF revenue that they get. Hundred and forty-two thousand budgeted for TIF reimbursements for all the reimbursement agreements that we have with the different businesses in the downtown. And total expenditures are projected at five hundred and sixty-six thousand. So that leaves the fund with an estimated fund balance of one point seven million. And the DDA has been talking quite a bit about looking at their long-term plans. They want to make sure by twenty thirty-two that they are able to pay off all of their debts. So they do have two debts outstanding right now, which I believe are about two point seven million. I have to look at the exact number, but I think right now they have two point seven million dollars in debt. And so they are looking to see what can they do in the near term? They did do a lot of discussion about micro grants, so that'll probably come back to you as a supplemental at the beginning of the year. I'm assuming that's going to be somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range, but I don't know for sure exactly how much the total program will be. But they are very conscious, I want to be aware that they are very conscious of their fund balance and they're looking to make sure they have enough to pay off all those debts before they do anything significant.
Are they, have they been discussing or has there been any conversation about possibly doing some early retirement?
Yes, absolutely. And I believe
Because they've got a significant savings that could be used.
Correct.
Just a thought.
Twenty twenty-eight is when they'll pay off the larger of the debts they have right now. So one of their debts has a balance of one point two million.
Yeah.
And the other one.
And that's at the end of twenty-five?
Twelve, twenty-eight. That's at the end of twenty-eight. And then their other debt. Oh, I way overestimated their debt. Wait a minute, am I looking at the right thing here? One point two and then
And then two fifty.
Yeah, so they don't have.
Yeah.
So actually I take that back. They have enough to pay off all their debts right now.
Something like that.
So anyway, they are looking at that.
Excellent.
All right, now we'll move on to park and rec. So this is a summary of all of the park and rec expenditures for park and rec culture center, cultural center and the aquatic center. And you can see an overview here of what the general fund investment has been in each of these funds from two thousand twenty to the two thousand twenty-five budget number. And then you also can see their expenditures and their revenues. So our, our general fund investment projection for park and rec next year is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Culture, Culture Center is three thousand, and they are very proud of the fact that they are getting that as close to zero as they possibly can, which is awesome. And then the Aquatic Center is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar investment, not including their debt covenant, which is about seven hundred thousand additional. So that's the total, a general fund investment that we put into park and rec. You can see that the Aquatic Center, their revenue has been going up year over year. And so they've been doing a great job there. It's just with any park and rec program, we subsidize it. So the better every, all of them do, the more it usually costs the city, but it shows that people are using it and that's a good thing, in my opinion. All right, then we have lodging tax. So two thousand twenty-four, it looks like we're projecting about three hundred and sixty-six thousand for our lodging tax number. We will have the special election initiative that went into effect. It will go into effect at the end of this year. And so we will see whatever remaining ones drop off. And so our, my original projection from last year, assuming the that all of them would go away was three hundred and nine thousand. So we left that unchanged for next year. I do think that'll be pretty close. And then our expenditure budget is three hundred and twenty-one thousand, and that's mainly, that mainly goes to park and rec labor staff and it goes to the visitor center and a few other items, but it's all programmed towards downtown development and economic development there. Not downtown development, economic development, sorry. All right, Conservation Trust Fund, this one is about seventy-five thousand dollars every single year, so it continues unchanged for this year. And that funding goes towards the Warden Park Aquatic Center and then also the U-Pass Cultural Center. All right, streets. Kip would you like to, Kip's going to go through streets and water and wastewater for us.
Four-ten fund, you can see on there the two projects, construction, full deploration of Browning and then expansion of the the roads within the cemetery. There also is some other, just I'll say, general maintenance in there as far as street striping. And then on-call services for chip seal, crack seal and some patchwork that are included in that. Oh, there you go.
That's the, that's the four fifty.
So, yep, four hundred and fifty for on-call streets repair. And that would also include the crack seal and chip seal. Then there is the street striping at a hundred thousand and then just minor concrete street repairs, crosspans, curb and gutters at fifty thousand. Any questions with street fund? It's kind of a rebuild year, if you will. As you know, we're spending a lot of money right now with these projects.
I think our current estimate is about seven point two million. Well, actually, our current estimate for this year was much higher, but that's because one point three million dollars of the Highway sixty-seven project was a grant reimbursement from C dot, I believe. And so we don't know for certain how much we're going to get back on that yet, but in the fund balance page, when you look at the streets, I think we had estimated about eight point six for this year. We actually think it's going to be closer to seven point two, but we wanted to be conservative in in showing out those out years. So if you look at it and I'm telling you it's seven point two, but you're seeing eight point six, that's the reason. Because we do not have that money yet back, yet back yet, and we do not know for certain how much we're going to get back. So. Also, the medians, we've been getting a lot of questions about the medians and all the discussions that have been had at this point. I do think Kip and I are looking at the medians again, making sure that we do have that designed the way that we really want it to be for the city. I do think I've heard quite a bit of of outreach about the trees and the medians being removed and people are not necessarily happy about that. So we're going to take another look at that. And if there is additional cost, we will bring that back to you as a supplemental. If we do end up going with the median statues or other things, we'll bring that back at a later point. Because we're, we're not certain right now what what it's going to look like. We're not sure if we're going to do the concrete stamping. We're not, we're not sure about a lot of it, so. We're going to come back.
And that's kind of been the answer to a lot of people's questions about the weeds and things.
Yes.
And I would, I would hope and I would love it if we could, I know it requires closing down a lane of highway to work in those medians on twenty-four, but a lot of of our beds and different things around the city look pretty tacky. And I'd just like to ask that we try to make a plan to address that for going forward, if we could, please.
Absolutely. The, the medians will be a top priority for us next year in terms of maintenance, because I, I don't like seeing the weeds in the medians either, especially the dead weeds.
Yeah. I haven't had him, had a call from David Butterey, but he always calls me and says, you know, I hate weeds. And then you find him out there.
I get the
Working on weeds.
I get
Yeah. We will, though, we will, though, continue to light the existing trees this year, correct?
Absolutely. We are very excited about the the plans for the Christmas lights this year. So yes, I think we add a couple of fake trees in there as well. So it's, it's kind of harder to tell at night, but during the day you can see them.
At night, it's nice.
Yes. All right, anything else for the four-ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the Stormwater Management Fund, very exciting. We have one hundred and sixty-five thousand, it's unchanged from the year before. I will say that the fund balance has been growing in the Stormwater Management Fund. And so Kip and I will discuss what for the future, what we want to do with that fund balance, what projects are coming up. I know there's probably quite a few that we could spend this on. But we're a little gun shy this year. We bit off a lot and we're, we're, you're seeing in next year's, next year's budget, we're going to be a little bit more apprehensive to take on so much at the same time. All right.
So are we still at two dollars?
Yes, we are. Two dollars per customer per month.
That's been that way since the beginning of time.
It has.
And what about capital? That goes up with the CPI, the, the capital fees?
It does.
In the Stormwater Fund?
Yep.
And so that's why they're, and that, that's why we have seen an increase in the revenue and the fund balance. And so we need to take a look at that and figure out what we're going to do with it. All right.
Don't remember, is, is there a provision in the ordinance that allows for consideration of just a minor increase to help with that on the residential side, the two dollars?
Um, yeah, we just have to bring a new ordinance back to council, I believe.
I, I don't always want to increase things, but that's been that way for, since it began.
Right.
That fan, fund began. So anyway, just curious, thank you.
We, we've tossed it around from time to time, just to see if it got any traction.
Thank you.
Okay, the wastewater five-twenty fund continues to remain stable. We're in the middle of paying off the expansion from twenty seventeen still. So we're, we're moving forward. The plant has, has done very well. It's been about, geez. It's been that long already, hasn't it? So we're, we're coming into a couple of little maintenance things that are popping up from time to time, but nothing too serious. Capital expenses for consist of the following, collection system improvements. I always budget a number in here for emergency repairs. You, everyone will remember the emergency repair we had to do in the highway right there by Sonic. This seems to be enough to cover those types of things. So we're just going to hold steady with that. Also, with plant upgrades, so we have UV, that's been kind of an ongoing thing. At first, I thought it would be just when the bulbs were, were going out, but we were replacing bulbs one at a time. And the manufacturer says we need to do them all when we replace one, just because the intensity of the bulbs. So it's basically every year, it's fifteen thousand to replace those bulbs. And that's for redundancy as well, because what was happening is the, the, the frequency of the lighting would be reduced to where both banks would run at the same time. So we didn't have backup. So we're trying to just run one bank at a time and have backup. So that continues boiler upgrades. We have been slowly planning for this. We have a very old system. Right now, I have that at a hundred thousand dollars. It was eighty last year. And the reasoning for that increase was consultant came out and wanted to do four small Um, and the reasoning for that increase was, uh, consultant came out and wanted to do, um, four smaller boilers to, to better handle the loading, um, at the, at the plant and have the backups. So that's why that's there. Uh, the harmonic filter, uh, you're seeing that again, uh, because I refuse to replace it. Um, um, it's a core requirement when we did the expansion. It cleans the energy that's sent back to the grid. Um, they haven't complained yet, so they're replacing it yet. Sorry. Um, a couple of other, uh, minor things, um, mixers, uh, those are coming and going more frequently. Uh, an outbuilding repair and a new sewer camera. Um, last time we, uh, purchased a sewer camera was about uh, fifteen years ago. We've had some minor upgrades to it, but what we're finding is it's just now holding up. And then with technology, uh, the, the computer likes to go down a lot. So, uh, gonna replace the sewer camera. And then the loaders for composting, that is just the annual cost that we spend. Um, we have two loaders budgeted for next year. It's twenty thousand a loader. It's on a replacement plan. We get, we get a new loader every two years and we have two out there. So it seems to work out very well for us because the new loaders are quite expensive, over two hundred thousand now. Um, and, uh, they're always under warranty. So on it, they break, they fix it for free. Any questions on wastewater? Okay, uh, water, um, you can see the numbers here. Um, we did very well this year as well in regards to tap fees. Uh, we had about a million dollars in tap fees or tap sales revenue, uh, so that, uh, boosted our fund balance as well. Um, we have, uh, not really seen a reduction in water usage, even though we're in water restrictions. Um, so I, there's no sense of coming out of them, I guess, at this point. Um, I don't have anything planned as far as more water usage for next year. So revenues will just continue to go up with inflation as far as metered water sales. Excellent. Uh, here's the list of improvements, uh, for the water fund. Um, meter replacement is being reduced. It, it was holding steady at two hundred and fifty thousand a year. Uh, we are getting very close to the end of replacing meters, uh, so that, that cost has gone down. Uh, the Gold Hill tank, um, is at two point five million. That was budgeted for this year. Uh, right now that is currently out for bid, uh, for engineering. Um, to put it, to put the construction, our plan is to put the construction out to bid, uh, first of the year. Uh, so it's taken me a little longer to get that project going. I do apologize for that. And then also, uh, Gold Hill pumps, upgrading the pumps in the Gold Hill pump station, which pump water up to the Gold Hill tank. Um, there's just time for a little bit of rebuild, if you will. Um, equipment for the plant, some reservoir monitoring, uh, currently right now, uh, we don't have, uh, any technology at the reservoir to monitor it. We physically go up there and chip through the ice, um, to get readings in the winter. Um, uh, we, we snowshoed at the back of it because it seems to get more snow than town. Um, so we're trying to put some technology up there to, to better, more accurately see what's going on. Uh, filter rehab, um, this is the, the two filter trains we have, um, they're due for, I'll say a sand blasting and recoating. Um, so that's on there as well. Um, we have one vehicle in the water fund at the fifty-five thousand. And then the, the big one at the bottom, um, is the reservoir engineering. Um, I was hopeful to bring council a contract tonight for the, the access points, um, that is not happening. Um, so I don't know if they're, um, that's been.
No.
No, okay, sorry. So this, this number is not included in the access to the reservoir. Um, we just have, uh, some things we're working out, uh, with the contract with the engineer and the geotech company. So that's the holdup for that. So as far as off the table for tonight, yeah, I do apologize. Um, and then radiant removal, we have had to scale back just due to other expenses and looking at other options. So this is the engineering for radiant removal. Um, in the, uh, utilities in the water fund, um, we have, uh, one additional position in utilities that we're asking for, um, the utilities analyst at a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that total position. Um, I'm just finding where I just need more help in the admin side of things. Um, it's just busier these days, uh, tracking everything and keeping up with projects, um, and so on and so forth. So I have that request in the budget as well.
That's it for your sections.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. So yes, the only position that's being requested in this year's budget is the utility analyst. Um, it is to give Kip a higher level of water planning and water administration. Um, aside from that, most of the other items remain unchanged. You will see in here that we have added the operations and technology as an umbrella here. Um, and it has fifteen employees because that's fleet, that's facilities and grounds, that's our GIS technician. Um, and it's also our IT department. So we haven't added anything there. We've just restructured it a little bit. But yeah, that, that's the only real change from, from last year to this year. The victim advocacy, that program, it looks like is moving over to the county from the city because it is more of a county function. So that's why we don't have it in this year's budget as well. Any questions on this or anything we've seen so far? All right. So from here we will go into, oh, I'm sorry, we have debt service first. Okay, so our debt payments that we have for two thousand twenty-five, we have the seven hundred and three thousand for the aquatic center. And then we have the two, uh, loans that Kip was describing for the wastewater plant. All right. So here's the, an overview of all of our funds, looking at it from twenty-three, twenty-four budget and what we think actuals will be and then twenty-five and how much it's gone up or down each year. You can see that overall, we're looking at a negative ten point, ten point eight percent change. A lot of that is capital projects. The streets fund had about seven point one million last year and this year I think we're projecting two point eight. So that, that's a big part of the change there. Um, general fund is a two point eight percent increase, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars more for twenty-five proposed budget than twenty-four's. Um, any questions?
Aaron, I have a question. Um, well, do you know off the top of your head what the interest rate is on the aquatic center?
Um, it does fluctuate between two point five and four point two five, I believe. So it is lower than our current, um, investment rate.
Mm-hmm. And who, who holds the, the note?
Zion.
Okay.
So right now I think we're earning about five point two five percent in our investment fund. And so we, we are, we are definitely not losing money on the, on the loan. All right. Here's a little bit of an overview of where our revenues come from for the general fund. You can see eighty percent of our revenues come from taxes. That's a combination of sales tax, property taxes. Um, then we have operating transfers which come from the four-ten fund, the five-ten fund, the five-twenty fund and the four-twenty fund. That makes up twelve percent of our total revenues. And then we have other little ones. We have specific ownership. We have intergovernmental items. We have license and permits and charges for services. So overwhelmingly our, our revenues come from tax base. All right. And then here's a breakdown of our general fund expenditures. So you can see by department how it breaks down here. Um, our biggest item is the PD at about three point seven million. Uh, then we have the, the sales tax for the school district is three point two million, uh, general administration's two point three million, um, and then it goes on from there.
So Aaron, can I ask a question real quick on the last, on the original pie chart, your general fund revenues? The taxes, um, how much of that is property tax versus sales tax?
Um, I don't have the breakdown here in front of you, but it, it's usually about sixty-five percent comes from sales tax and about thirty-two percent, I think, comes from property tax and then about three percent comes from the rest of the other little taxes we have.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then we have all of our funds revenue. Um, so you can see we have about twenty-six point two million dollars in total revenue for the city. Uh, fifteen point four million of that comes from general funds, three point one comes from streets, two point five from wastewater, two point nine from water. Uh, one point five comes from culture and rec and three hundred thousand approximately from the lodging tax. So that, that's kind of an overview of where, where does all of our money come from for the city? And then our expenditures. So our fund balance in the water, wastewater and streets funds allow us to spend more than we actually bring in. So our expected expenditures for the citywide is thirty-one point six million. Um, you can see general fund is sixteen million of that. And then you have streets at two point eight, water at two point, uh, seven point five and wastewater at two point six. All right. So that's it for the, the overview and all of the changes that we wanted to highlight. Now we can go through department by department and highlight the changes for each department. We can talk about any questions you might have on those. Um, so for the city council budget, no changes from last year.
Um.
There, there's no cost of living increase on your wages.
I was gonna say, where's my cola?
That's. Um, all right. Okay. So for the city manager budget, we do have two items added in there for the twenty-five budget. We have thirty thousand for the main street contribution. And then eighteen thousand dollars for the lobbyist and legislative support. And those were the only two changes that we recommended in here. All right, municipal court, no changes. Finance, no changes. Any questions so far?
Aaron, on the lobbyist support, um, I know that we had given consensus to, to make that happen. Did we have to wait to the beginning of the calendar year?
We did not. We, we, we have signed the contract and started with them, but he charged us on a monthly basis. So for this year, it's only been, I think for this year, it's only gonna be like four thousand total, but next year it'll be eight thousand for the year.
Okay.
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
Eighteen, yeah.
I'm sorry, wake up. I'm glad you guys are awake. All right, let's see.
Don't count on it.
Okay, operations and technology. So this is where a lot of the items that I had highlighted before are the badge readers, the bad re, badge readers for the UPCC exterior doors is thirty thousand. We have the one vehicle replacement for fifty-four, um, IT server replacements. We have, um, two of our servers at the police department need to be replaced. They have aged out. And so that's about seventy-five thousand dollars, including the warranties and everything else for that one. And then the planning office remodel is thirty-five. Yeah. The seventy-five also includes, um, some general IT support and things, but that's, I think the actual servers themselves are sixty. I can see, I can see Jeff questioning the cost and that he's right.
No, no, no. I've, I've just, I was thinking in my head. So for, just for the public's, um, knowledge is you have the cost of the hardware. But then you have the cost of the support, the hardware replacement, all of that tax on top. So, um, I was thinking in my head, seventy-five, wow, what servers? And then you clarified sixty, I, I, I could buy thirty upon.
All right, um, okay, then we have interdepartmental. So this is where we have that, the property casualty increase of a hundred and twelve thousand. Um, the salary adjustment line that I referenced earlier, we added an aspirant additional fifty thousand in that line so that we can do targeted adjustments based on what the market's telling us for positions and then forty thousand dollars for the visitor center. All right, police department. So in the police department budget adds, we had the two patrol vehicles, uh, which is a hundred and, oh, that says a hundred and seventy-five. That's not right. It's a hundred and fifty thousand, gotta update that on here. Uh, and then we had two acts on subscription changes that we had. We had twenty-one thousand dollars for Axon BWC and then twenty-five thousand dollars for Axon Fleet LPR cameras.
So it's like body cameras and patrol cameras?
It's the license plate readers, correct?
Oh, okay.
And then the body cam, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What does BWC stand for?
I think it's the body worn cameras.
What is, is that an acronym?
Either, yeah, the BWC.
Just. Oh, I got it now.
It's, it's, it's this thing that they wear right here.
You know what? I'm sleeping up here too, so.
We, we need Cuban coffee or espressos.
Duh.
Planning department, they don't have any adjustments on this one, but they do have the planning remodel, which is in the operations budget. Public works had no adjustments. We had done quite a bit of adjustments the pre, previous two years, adding, um, equipment and just cost of living, uh, cola increases that we had to different lines. So that, that's part of why we didn't have anything in the twenty-five budget. Okay, culture and rec. So we had a couple of fun things in the culture and rec. We had a mini maker space, which was nine thousand six hundred dollars. Um, that one, they do expect a revenue offset on, but I highlighted it here just so you could see that we are requesting the additional funds in the line. Um, and then we have some, several aquatic center lines. So they have pool lighting that needs to be replaced as well as the ballast. So those two, I think is about seventy-one hundred dollars. Um, we have the pool chemical increase, which is just really a mandated cost. The cost has just gone up. It's five thousand. And then travel training of two thousand dollars for additional training for the staff. I will say that as we look out in the current five-year plan, we don't have a lot of the infrastructure costs for the aquatic center in there because it's not time yet. But I will say that when we get to about year seven, a lot of the, the pumps, a lot of the equipment at the aquatic center, the pool lining itself, there's gonna be some costs that are pretty substantial that we will have to look at as we get to that point. Uh, but in this year's budget, there's nothing programmed for that right now.
Any context as to what substantial might mean?
Uh, it's a pretty big number.
Okay.
Uh, Br, Brady has broken down and provided me with a list of everything he thinks over the next fifteen years. And so, uh, we will have to start looking at that as we get into the, the future couple of years from now. Uh, but, but it is a pretty big number. All right. And then I can, Kip gave the update on these, but, um, these are just all of the adjustments that we had in the wastewater budget line. It's everything that Kip went over previously. It's all of the capital items that he had in there. Um, and then water, it's the same thing. Did, did you have any questions on water or wastewater? Any of the items there? I know you're all just excited to get the reservoir done. We're, we're trying. We're trying.
It's a long time project.
It is. Grants, I highlighted this before. This is the, the only change we had in here is that we're gonna spend the remaining ARPA funds that we have left, the four hundred and eleven thousand. Um, DDA, there were no additions in here, but I do anticipate them bringing a supplemental for those micro grants.
Question about ARPA grants, but were there any real restrictions on how that money was spent?
At the beginning, they had all kinds of restrictions and then towards the middle, after they put out a couple of additional rulings, they said we could use it for revenue recovery. So there wasn't much restriction on what we could use it for.
Tax payers dollars at work? Aaron, does, I don't know if everyone knows what ARPA funds are or if the public knows what that means.
I know it's been so many years that we've been talking about.
Yeah, you might want to tell them.
It's the American Recovery Plan. It, it was all part of, it was actually in a, a second part to the CARES Act funding that we had after COVID. And, um, we ended up getting one point nine million in total. We've spent the majority of the money. Um, a lot of it was on the dove treatment. Uh, what was that saying for again? It's very exciting. So that's why we turned his mic off.
That one deserved the microphone.
But a million dollars we spent for that. Um, some of it was on, um, I think essential worker pay, or I forget the term that was used at that time. Um, but this is what's remaining.
Lots of hand sanitizer and face masks.
There was a lot of, uh, yes, PPP equipment. All right. Um, yeah, so that, that's what's remaining. But yes, to, to your point, they did have a lot of restrictions when it first came out and then it, it was much scaled back after. All right, um, lodging tax, no, no additions requested there. We just do anticipate that will be less revenue, um, but only by about sixty thousand. Conservation trust fund, there are no adjustments and it's still the seventy-five thousand. And then these are the same, same items that we had from streets in the previous. All right. Um, so five-year plan. So in two thousand twenty-three, we rolled out the five-year plan introduction. Um, this year's plan will cover two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine. And it, it definitely provides greater insight into the city's financial capabilities when we're looking at large purchases. Can we really afford that long-term? Um, and so it shows us if we can meet our current needs and then also our long-term service level obligations. And of course, the GFOA recommends this. Um, it's definitely a best practice for, for cities all over. Uh, there we go. Okay, so here's our five-year summary for the general fund. Um, in two thousand Um, in two thousand twenty-five, we expect revenues to be approximately fifteen point four million. And by two thousand twenty-nine, we expect those to grow to seventeen point one million, which is essentially. Um, between a three and a two and a half percent increase each year, um, from now until then. Uh, and then our expenditures, we have inflationary metrics built into all of our budget lines, based on whether they're utilities, whether they're insurance. Um, whether they're general inflation, so we have a a bunch of different metrics that we use to estimate how much each line's gonna go up by. Um, so in two thousand twenty-five, we have our projected expenditures at sixteen million. And you can see there that it's five hundred and seventy-three thousand more for expenditures than our revenues. The reason that we have that programmed in there is because we have the fund balance from the previous year. Rolling over with with the savings from the vacancies and also from not spending the capital. So it's still a balanced budget, even though we do show revenues exceeding, I mean expenditures exceeding revenues there. Um, and as we roll out, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we do have capital expenditures programmed into each of those years. And our capital expenditures exceed the amount that our expenditures are over our revenues. So we don't ever actually expect for our fund balance to decrease, if that makes sense, and you can see that it does get lower as the years go on. Real simple, any questions on that? The whole point of this, this is to show you that we are gonna maintain a relative fund balance to what we have today. Questions? No. Alright. Okay, so our general fund revenues, as I said, it looks like in twenty-five, we're projecting fifteen point four million. And you can see how those lines increase across for each of our different areas of taxes, licenses. This charges for service, you can see how we expect them to increase as we go from twenty-five to twenty-nine. And then expenditures, you can see the same, we break it up by salary and benefits, operating expenses, our capital outlay. Debt service and then transfers out, and the transfers out for the park and rec. Our culture and rec fund.
Can you go back one slide here, sorry? Okay, so what's the percentage, and I know this is just a forecast, but what's the percentage increase in the taxes of over five years?
Taxes is three percent for, I think, the first three years and then two and a half for the last two.
Okay, and then have you guys factored in the, the, whatever the state's trying to do to reduce property tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I kept property taxes, we can look at the line, but it's. Uh, property taxes, I think I increased it like three percent a year or some, something pretty, pretty reasonable based on readjustment rates, which is pretty standard. If you go back over like a ten-year period, you can see that it generally goes up about two to three percent in a non-assessment year. It goes up five to six percent in an assessment year, and that's been pretty standard for quite a while.
Okay.
Well, that's a a good question on um our mill, the mill levy collected for the city. Is this budget projection based on the base mill levy or the one that we, um?
It's based on temporary.
The temp- on the temporary credit.
Until, until House Bill one zero zero one goes into effect fully, um, I did use the same.
Okay.
Pretty much the same threshold that we had the previous year. With, without it going up, which is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That is a conversation that we need to have before the first meeting.
We will.
First meeting in December, um, before we certify the mill levy. Is whether or not we want to look at that.
And I will.
Hopefully we'll have more information about the new house bill.
Yes.
Oh, I had one other question.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, um, licenses and per- and permits. I don't know if that substantial increase, but what what's your thought on more permits or this building?
I just.
You're just throwing a number.
I look at, yeah, I looked at the past ten years and saw how much it had increased, and so we basically just take that and.
Okay.
Project into the future, you know.
Okay.
It's real rocket science that we use.
And I know it's just a five-year forecast.
Yeah, the forecast itself is easy. It's building it all out into all the sheets that takes the time, but it's, yeah, the actual methodology behind it is pretty straightforward. Alright, and then, so that was the general fund, and then we have our all funds. So you can see for twenty-five, thirty-one point eight million is the total expenditures for all of our funds in two thousand twenty-five. Um, and as I said, you can see it, it fluctuates very. A lot, based on the capital expenditures that we have in the four-ten fund, the five-ten and the five-twenty fund. Uh, general fund is pretty steady across, unless we have some huge capital expenditure. Like in twenty twenty-five, we programmed in a few additional capital expenditures with that, with the UPCC. And then also, uh, some of the vehicles that we're purchasing, but you can see in the following year it goes down. And so it's, it's not just always going up, but with four-ten, five-ten and five-twenty, those can be pretty dramatic, depending. You know, what what percentage of the revenue, the reservoir are we building in twenty-seven, you know? It could be a much bigger chunk than the other years, so that's, that's why you see that fluctuation and why it actually goes down over time instead of going up.
Should, should we reflect the aquatic center capital improvements that you know that you're concerned?
We, we probably will, starting in two thousand thirty-one.
Oh.
Yeah, and so that's where we're gonna have to look at that.
Okay.
Yep. Alright, and then that's just a pretty chart showing you the same information, not the one beforehand. Uh, you can hang this up in your kitchens if you like. Alright, and then he, here's our five-year capital improvement program, so this is all the capital. This is built in to these lines that we show for all the funds. Um, they match exactly to what's in the five-year capital improvement plan, so for general fund, we have three hundred and sixty-four scheduled for this year. Four sixty for next year, and then it goes down to the vehicle replacements that we have scheduled for two twenty, one eighty-five and one twenty. Uh, grants is much larger because we have that ARPA funding that we're gonna spend this year. Uh, but after that, we don't anticipate any additional capital funding out of the grants fund. And then you can see streets, wastewater and water. Um, I will say streets, we s- we spent a tremendous amount of the fund balance this year doing the projects that we did. So we won't be able to do a year like that again for a long time, so we'll have to. That, that's why you're seeing less for the next few years, so that we can rebuild that fund balance a little bit, so we can do some bigger projects in there. Uh, and then water, uh, we have the five million budgeted this year, and then. That's the rest for, for the reservoir and some of the other projects that we're looking to do.
Do we anticipate that the reservoir would ever require a bond question?
I think we looked at that last year.
Um, there will be debt service, uh, for the.
Debt service, okay.
Yeah, um, right now, for the engineering and the access, it's all funded with cash. Um, and then we have enough cash still in reserve is my plan for any kind of grants to match. Um, and then the rest will be financed.
But both funds, the water and wastewater are very healthy right now, so we we anticipate spending as much of that as we possibly can without taking out the debt, so. And if we wait long enough, maybe the interest rates will go back down. That was a joke, we're not gonna wait. Alright, what, what questions do you have today? Um, if you have questions you'd like me to researching it back to you on before the November seventh work session. Otherwise, we can answer any questions you have at the November seventh work sessions. You don't have them today.
Go ahead, counsel, maybe. I just had one question. We had talked about um adding an additional code enforcement officer, but you don't have that in the budget. Did we decide not to do that, or?
At our last meeting, we discussed that we were going to give our current code enforcement person. Uh, a chance to get into the position and fully get engaged, and then we're also gonna work with Nina and look at some of our policies and see if there's some. Code things maybe we could change, um, before we add more personnel.
Okay.
Anyone else? Alright, another joke, oh, good. So I noticed that Kip's new. Vehicle is, um, the, what, what, uh, F-one or fifteen hundred something, it's fifty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
And then there's an, then another one for the city that's fifty-four thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's probably.
Y'all need to hook up your, hook up your, um, your car salespeople, and then, and then let chief know who to call.
Oh, my goodness. I, I, it's probably, it probably is.
I wish I had all those fancy lights.
Oh, goodness. Alright, well, thank you very much. Uh, we will have another work session on the seventh and answer any questions that we have.
Thank you, Aaron.
And I will have the mill levy information provided as well, so that we can make a decision on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Aaron. We'll reconvene at six-thirty for the regular meeting.